To order. First item, it's the minutes of October 10th.
A motion. I'm not sure I move to approve this.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Items two through four are for information. Do you need any further information? If I could just turn the page. Item five. Small wireless facilities and monopole structures.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. So in the last state legislative session, the state legislature approved a bill that placed some requirements and limitations on how cities and towns are able to manage the installation of small wireless facilities in city right-of-way. The bill provided for a six-month period from when the law went into effect on August 9th to allow cities to revise their processes and establish fees that ensure compliance with the new state provisions. Ray DeValena, Street Transportation Director, and Keeney Knudsen, City Engineer and Assistant Street Director, are here to provide an overview of the city's draft code changes to the changes that ensure to balance the needs of residents, businesses, and neighborhoods with the potential safety issues and visual issues, along with making sure that we can recover the city's costs as much as possible for the process. Just one word of note for this item. Yesterday, the city received word from the wireless industry representatives with concerns about the proposal before you today, and staff suggests that we take no action today, but bring this item back in December for further discussion, but that we still proceed with the presentation and discussion today. This will allow time for staff to meet with the industry representatives and further discuss, answer questions, provide clarification, and make possible changes to the draft before you. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Street Transportation Department.
Thank you, Mario. Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, here to give you a little more specifics and details about what the item that's on the agenda today. The first thing I wanted to start out was is kind of a definition, just for everybody's sake, of what is a small cell facility. These are smaller facilities than what we typically see as a cell tower that you would see out there, a large cell tower, and they are designed to be in areas to be able to expand the wireless carrier's network and be able to provide capacity in areas where you have a high data use need. So we've been working with the wireless companies since 2012 on an existing ordinance that we have in place. We have an existing ordinance that we put in in 2012 that was adopted by council. Since then, we've been working with them on installations and how we do this. Typically, when you're looking at a small wireless facility, you've got antenna equipment that are up on a pole, and you've got ground-mounted equipment that include radios, other things to be able to power this facility that sit on the ground, right adjacent, typically adjacent to that pole. In the city of Phoenix, that typically, our installations have been on streetlight poles and also on traffic signal poles. So they've been focused on using existing poles in the right-of-way that are city-owned to be able to put these facilities out there. I would also mention that we have master license agreements with all the major wireless companies existing, and for each one of the installations, we have site license agreements that govern the actual individual installations. So where we are today, to date since 2012, we've had about 200 different permitted installations and an additional 100 that are in process, and that number keeps moving as the wireless companies look for additional opportunities to be able to put these out in the right-of-way. The existing ordinance that we have on books, just so I want to talk about this, when we did the ordinance changes in 2012, it was specifically working with the wireless companies to come up with a fee structure that would work for these types of facilities. And so this was done in conjunction in 2012 with the wireless industry. And so the basic terms of that is that when they come into the right-of-way and use the right-of-way, it's not for free. They pay $3,700 a year for each one of these sites. And then when the staff go through the process of reviewing applications and permitting and actually going out and doing inspections to make sure that the installation is safe and we don't have any issues, because there are issues where obviously we have duty for the city to be able to manage the right-of-way on behalf of the public. So we want to make sure that we have the time necessary to be able to do that. So that is what is existing for our existing ordinance. Is to date, we've brought in about in revenue about $930,000 for those installations, and then last year was about $150,000, and to date this year, $360,000, and that's the existing agreements we have in place. So the new state law, the primary reason, and from our perspective, and the wireless companies may have a different perspective, but I think they see on the horizon as the move from the 4G network to the, as of yet, to be defined, the 5G network, which is the next move of where we see data and wireless coverage going for around the country. And the reason is with the higher bandwidths that these operate at, there are going to be a higher number of these facilities. So they want to have a more streamlined process, as I assume, to be able to make sure that these are able to be put in the right-of-way where they want to. The key aspects of the state law that changed that came out is the ability for these, the wireless companies, to put these in the right-of-way by right. Before, it was by, we could permit them, and it was on our option to be able to do this. Not all the cities in the state and around the Phoenix metro area have existing ordinances placed to be able to do this. Only a handful of them do. We have a lot of experience doing this, but one of the other things is it provides a reduced review time, and from, that's what the state law does, is provide a reduced review time for the cities to be able to turn around these applications. And then it also significantly reduces the amount of fees, both for the use of the right-of-way and also on what staff can charge for reviewing applications and permitting the process. And so I think the one concern we had, and we, as this bill went through the legislature, we were the only city in the state to come out in opposition to the bill. The reason was we've had concerns about how it would be implemented, but we also, from talking with our city attorney, and I'll use their language, is that we have a non-delegable duty to manage the right-of-way, not for the interests of private companies, but for the interest of our citizens of Phoenix. And so that's what we are focused on doing and making sure that we comply with this new state law. So our key concerns about the wireless facility, the bill and the upcoming number of applications we see is really the truly the number of applications. You could literally, when you look at five companies doing this all in the same area, you could have thousands of these installations in a square mile area, and this is essentially a square mile area here. And we just don't know how many of these are going to be out there. And so we want to make sure that when these are going out there, that we're considering how many of these facilities are going to be out there and what the impact of that will have on our city, on our citizens, when this goes through. The other part is aesthetics, and you only have to go to some of our neighboring states and look at some of the small wireless facilities that have happened in some of those states to see what, if you don't do this with care and concern about what will, when you have a lot of these facilities out there and what they may look like, you, this is what, the picture up here is a small wireless facility installation on a pole, and I don't think anybody around the table out here wants to see this on our poles in the city of Phoenix. And so we are concerned with the aesthetics and concealment requirements related to these installations. And furthermore, what I put this picture in here for is imagine if you were a resident sitting on the balcony here, we want to make sure that where these things are located, it doesn't cause concern or health issues with the people who live in the, around these facilities and their proximity to antennas. We know that there are RF concerns out there, and there's things that we can manage related to that, and some things we can't because of federal law, but we wanted to make sure that this, as public concerns, are able to be addressed in what we do with our ordinance.
You just said health concerns. Is something been identified with this?
Well, I would say that from a federal law perspective, there are things that the federal law has said you cannot consider RF emissions a consideration, whether you locate these things, but there is at the same time, when we have our workers working on that pole, on the streetlight pole, those antennas have to be shut down because you don't want to have that close exposure to the RF as well. So what's the right distance? I'm sure there are plenty of other people who are smarter than me that could tell you what that right distance is, but we want to make sure that the distance and proximity of these things to where people are living and walking around is not going to cause any necessary concern. And then also, a part of the bill was the allowance to anywhere over 50 feet tall and up to 40 inches wide at the base, and they can be placed in the right-of-way as part of this bill as well, by right. So when we look at the ordinance changes, the draft ordinance changes that we brought forth in the packet today, we've divided them up into four areas, and as Mario mentioned that we've received a list of concerns from the wireless industry, and I'll talk a little more about the outreach we've done with the wireless industry in the last few months after I talk about this in a second. But the first part of this is structure type. So we wanted to really define out what types of structures we were going to be talking about permitting wireless facilities to be put on in the right-of-way. And so there's a list of different structures within that ordinance, really dealing with whether they're city poles or non-city poles, which in city poles, you're talking about streetlights and traffic signals. Non-city poles would be some other utilities, utility companies, maybe some other poles that might be out there existing. So we will seek to define those out there, what types of poles we'd be talking about permitting. Procedural requirements, those are the procedures of looking at, you know, making sure these facilities meet ADA clearance requirements for anything that goes out there, that we have visibility, if we have visibility concerns and that block visibility for users of the right-of-way, we want to make sure those things are addressed, but also the aesthetic and concealment requirements as well, to make sure that when these things go up, that they're not going to become an eyesore, because it's one thing if you're talking about one or a number of these facilities, but if you're talking literally thousands of these facilities around the Phoenix, we want to make sure that we're being good stewards of how we manage the public right-of-way. And I would also mention that what further complicates is you have five, at least at least five companies doing this, and they all do use different pieces of equipment and all different types of installations. So to come up with one standard concealment or screening requirement for this equipment is difficult, because, and you also have technology that's constantly changing, and things are getting smaller, but we want to make sure that we have a process to make sure that whatever's going up on our poles is something that the public is not going to be upset about. Rates and fees, and I would say that the rates and fees, the collection of rates and fees that we have proposed in here, the majority of them all do comply with the state law. They're mandated by the state law, so we have to follow that. There's other ones in there that go back to what I was talking about, non-delegable duty, because if we have to manage the right-of-way, we have to make sure whatever goes in the right-of-way meets safety requirements, that we go out there and inspect it. Everything we do in the, that happens in the right-of-way, we get in the process of inspecting to make sure it's safe. But what happens is if we don't have the ability to recover the money, to be able to do the funds, to be able, that we go spend out time doing that, then we're actually subsidizing the work we're doing in support of a private company working in our right-of-way. And we don't have that situation with any of our other utility companies that we work with. We, all the major utilities, dry utilities that we work with, we have the ability to go out and do inspections. So I know there's some concerns from the wireless industry about those additional fees. There's other fees that we have in there that are optional fees that'll make it easier for them, because when we talked with some of the industry representatives, they expressed about the number, amount of money that they spend to get ready for a site, for going on a pole, and they may not know whether that pole is even available to them. So we wanted to be able to provide some process in place where we could go out there and work with them to secure or reserve these poles that they had in mind, so that they didn't spend thousands of dollars on something that they couldn't be put on. And then lastly, the treatment of our existing facilities. We have existing, as we, agreements in place for a lot of existing facilities. We wanted to be able to cover the situation, how we deal with those existing agreements. And under those existing agreements, the providers have the right to be able to terminate those at any time and remove those facilities, and then they could come back and re-imply. We wanted to put something in place where they could leave those facilities up, but continue at the existing rates for a period of time, and then convert over to the new rates at a later date. Did want to talk about the wireless coordination with the wireless providers. Probably before the summer, we met with each one of the, with the wireless providers to talk over with them their concerns and to really just kind of talk with them about this and what process we were going to go forward with this, and we wanted to find out what their installations plans were, what they were looking at, what kind of equipment they were using, what were their installations going to look like. So we did that, I think, back in June, July timeframe. And then we also, we're going through a process to make sure that as we define these new ordinance changes, we weren't working from square one, like many other cities were. We were looking at existing ordinance language that we have in existing process that we had in place, then we're looking at a state law that kind of upset the apple cart a little bit for how we do things, and we're trying to make sure, how do we make sure we comply with the state law, but at the same time, we're looking for opportunities to be able to better protect our right-of-way and the public's concerns about these installations in the right-of-way. So it did take us a little more time over the summer to be able to put our draft ordinance changes together, but we did work with them and give them out to them at the end of October. We gave them the draft ordinance changes, and then we met with them a few days later to go through those changes, to talk them out, and we also asked them to provide comments up to them last week to, if they had any concerns. And we invited, and that process, as far as providing the information and meeting with them, we worked with all the wireless providers that we currently do business, that we have master site license agreements with. I would say that some of the wireless providers aren't necessarily the installers, they use other companies to do the installation of their equipment, so if we worked with them primarily, we would have invited them. So I know there was some concern from the wireless companies about not including everyone, but everyone we currently work with, and we work with pretty much everyone, we provided an invitation to, and if there's somebody we missed, we'll happily be able to circle back with them to make sure that we get their concerns noted as well.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, we know that there are folks that should have been involved, that we know would like to be involved at this point, and so that's the reason we like to push out those dates. Those dates on the screen are no longer the right ones, and so we would come back to TNI on December 12th, and that would also push out the formal action for the full city council meeting to January. That still gives us time to get this implemented by February 9th, which is the deadline in the state law.
Have you worked with any of the other surrounding cities so that we have some consistency?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, we've received, we were aware of, I mean, Paradise Valley was one of the first, Town of Paradise Valley was one of the first cities to go out and work on this and get something drafted and approved by their council. We've also been well aware, there's many of the East Valley cities that are working together on this, and we've got some language from City of Chandler that they've been working through. So we're well aware of what those other cities are doing and have incorporated at times, and some of the things that they actually, the wireless companies have issue with are some of the things that other cities are incorporating as well into theirs.
We have cards. You want the cards first?
Sure.
First. Is it Gary Hayes?
There, there, I believe.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. Gary Hayes, on behalf of AT&amp;T, my address is 2198 East Camelback in Phoenix. Just briefly, I'd like to thank staff for recommendation of continuance today. We are all here, the wireless industry is made up of AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, and Sprint, and we have all worked together to try and come up with something that would work. We do have major concerns with the proposed ordinance. We didn't get the voluminous, quite honestly, comments until last night, because we didn't want you to get four sets of comments. So what we did is we got this competitive industry to work together to come up with something that is one voice and one piece of paper. So we will work with your staff between now and the next subcommittee to try and come up with something. It is important, though, to think about the technology. While we're here talking about the ordinance, the technology is important, because it's, I want to say it's the future, but it's not, it's today. What we're talking about gives the best coverage in neighborhoods with the least impact on your residents. And so that's an important thing to keep in our mind as we work forward on this ordinance. We all get the iPhone 10s, or 12s, or 20s, or whatever they are, and it's just going to be more and more and more data and traffic going over our network. So we need these, but we need to make sure staff is right. Aesthetically pleasing, in the right spot, but we're all working on the same thing. It is very important to our industry. As a matter of fact, we have Verizon Market General Counsel flew out from Texas this morning to talk to you about this issue, and she's going to go through some of the concerns that the industry has as it relates to the proposed ordinance. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Danielle. AG.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the subcommittee. My name is Danielle AG. I'm Market General Counsel for Verizon Wireless. I reside at 9774 Buckhorn Drive in Frisco, Texas. And as my colleague here said, I did fly in this morning in order to meet with you today. Thank you for the opportunity to do so. As we've, as we've heard this morning, the purpose of us being here today is to talk about the ordinance changes that have been proposed, and I'd like to kind of describe for you in three categories, the number of concerns that we have with this ordinance. We appreciate the opportunity to push back the dates and have an additional opportunity to meet with staff, to talk about some of these concerns, and I'd be more than happy to come back out as many times as it takes in order to get this right. We know that you received quite a number of comments yesterday, and as was stated, we thought that it would be useful for you to receive all of those comments kind of in a consolidated fashion, so that you would receive all of them at one time, and see that we are aligned across the industry and some of the concerns that we have. So I would like to kind of focus on three categories of concerns, if you will. The first one is around the fees and other costs. The, as was mentioned, the House Bill 2365 permits specific application and use fees and right-of-way use fees, specifically $50 for right-of-way use and $50 for co-location on a city-owned utility poles. Those fees are the, are the fees that are expressly allowed, and the additional set of fees that we see in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, are in addition to, and we would respectfully submit in violation of the House Bill 2365. There are a number of fees from site walk fees, pole reservation fees, special review fees, it kind of goes on and on for a number of additional fees that are outside of and beyond what is contemplated by the legislation. In addition to those fees, thank you, in addition to those fees, there are other costs that are either direct or indirect in the ordinance. For example, there is a requirement for one personal RF emissions monitor per 25 facilities that will be required, an additional expense required of all of the providers. In addition to that, there is requirement for third-party safety and best-practice training to be conducted by each of the carriers or a payment of $3,000 annually to the city. That's an additional expense that is not contemplated by the legislation. In addition to that, there are design standards and requirements that will result in additional expenses to the carriers. Everything from shading required for single-use poles, additional screening in terms of plants and other conceal, excuse me, concealment requirements for each of the facilities, those will result in additional expenses. And so when you look at all of those additional requirements, either individually or in combination, those will result in excessive costs that were not contemplated by the legislation. And we know that one of the primary purposes of the legislation was not only to streamline the process for review, but also to make the costs and fees associated with citing these facilities sustainable, so that we can continue to densify the 4G network and also prepare for the 5G technology that we know is soon right around the corner. So that's the first category. And second category, kind of the fees and other costs, and then the design standards. I touched on some of them. In addition to those design costs that will result in additional fees, there also are allowed, under the legislation, the cities may establish objective design standards and concealment requirements, but it is a requirement in the legislation that those be reasonable. And we would submit to you that many of the spacing and setback requirements are not reasonable. We would, we would suggest also that many of the requirements around prohibition on certain equipment being on the poles and instead in the ground space, those are unreasonable. The requirements that certain equipment be on the ground does not contemplate or take into account the fact that the legislation includes a definition of small wireless facilities that allows for exposed elements, and requiring those things instead to be on the ground does not contemplate or acknowledge the fact that exposed elements are permitted under the legislative definition. In addition to that, the ordinance requires that the antennas be concealed in a specific type of canister. While reasonable concealment requirements may be permitted, it does not allow in the legislation that specific types of concealment requirements be provided, and many of them may be technically infeasible in order to allow for the best functionality of these facilities. Those concerns, in addition to some of the height restrictions or some of the placement for the facilities, all of those kind of taken in combination, we would submit to you, are outside of the reasonableness standard for the design standards and concealment requirements in the legislation. And then third, our third category would be the process and timelines. As we know, the legislation provides for specific timeframes for review and, review of these applications. There's 20 days that the city is permitted in order to let the carriers know if the applications are complete, and then 75 days for the city to either approve or deny. If they're not denied or approved within that period of time, they will be deemed approved. And then finally, if there is a denial, the carrier would have an opportunity to resubmit within 30 days' time. Those provisions are not included in the proposed ordinance. We suspect that the city may have been, or staff may have been thinking about just referencing back to the legislation for those, but we would suggest that it might be useful to include those specifically in the ordinance, so that there is no confusion as it's being applied and implemented. In addition to that, some of the other process concerns we have is around one of the specific provisions relating to public outreach. We know, and it was mentioned earlier, that there are certain installations that are permitted by right. Installation of new replacement or modified utility poles, so long as they meet the height restrictions, those are permitted by right. Co-location of small wireless facilities in any zone, as long as they meet the height restriction, those are permitted by right and without zoning review and approval. And so in order to require a public outreach, that is either the equivalent of or very close to a zoning process review that is expressly prohibited in the legislation. So we would respectfully request that that public outreach requirement be removed. And then also, as it relates to the existing agreements, as is mentioned, many of the carriers do have existing agreements with the city, and those existing agreements were expressly called out in the legislation and expressly stated that the carriers would have an opportunity to accept the new rates and terms permitted in the legislation after the effective date of the new ordinances that would be adopted by the cities. And so instead of a process, as is stated in the ordinance, that would require those existing agreements to continue for a three-year or five-year period, the legislation would allow for the carriers to immediately take advantage of the new rates under the legislation after February 9th. We would submit to you that requiring those existing agreements to continue for three or five years is in violation of the House Bill, excuse me, House Bill 2365. And instead, to require the carriers to terminate those agreements, to take down all of their facilities, to restore the sites, and then reapply, it's kind of a draconian way of handling this. We would suggest that it is, would result in additional cost, additional time by the city staff that may not be the best use of time when we know that those facilities would need to be replaced in those same locations, and otherwise should have been allowed to take advantage of the new rates, terms, and conditions under the legislation. So those are the, kind of the three categories of concern around fees, around the design standards, which we believe are unreasonable stealth and concealment requirements, unreasonable spacing and setbacks, and then finally, the process concerns that I've mentioned. Are there any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Are you sure you met with it?
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, I wanted to make a mention, the lengthy comments we received just yesterday from them, they reviewed an older document, because after we had met with the wireless companies, the ones that we met with on November 2nd, we received some actually email comments after that, actually on November 3rd. We went and revised our draft ordinance, and that's what is actually in the packet. So what they reviewed is a draft version, it's not what's actually in the packet. So many of the things that, as AG mentioned, are not issues or not concerns, because we heard them in our meeting back on November 2nd. So many of the things that she talked to, especially the outreach requirement, we changed that to be a notification process, and there's some other things as well, and there as well, that we made changes and adjustments based on the feedback we received from the wireless companies.
Thank you. Don Isaacson?
Don Isaacson?
Good morning. Madam Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Don Isaacson on behalf of Sprint with the firm of Isaacson and Walsh located at 3101 North Central. I don't want to duplicate the comments already made, we're in full support. Just a couple of comments. What's driving this all is an incredible demand for the use of the device, the mobile devices, and the new technology. And those coming together, both the demand and the ability to satisfy that demand in a brand-new way. While the huge cell tower, the day of those, aren't over completely, what's being done now is a much smaller, less offensive, less obtrusive technology. And so Phoenix ordinance and other city ordinances, which were designed for the big tower and big equipment, just don't work anymore, both for time of implementation and fees. And that's what's going on right now here and in other cities all across Arizona. Phoenix and other cities here have the advantage of being out in front. The legislation passed, this past session was among the first of its kind in the country, setting a template for all cities here to pass quickly implementing legislation for this new technology. It will be great for the residents, it'll be great for the businesses, and unlike a lot of ordinances, it is truly win-win-win, because it will set up an opportunity that exists for Phoenix that we call smart cities. It will allow you, the city of Phoenix, in traffic management, traffic control, emergency response, to enjoy the benefits of that same technology that your businesses and ordinances do. We did not have the draft document that staff is talking about, we're glad that changes have been made, we look forward to working with the staff. And I can attest that we've had great relationships with staff over time, we're confident that with sitting down and looking at the 2365 and trying to put the ordinance in compliance with it, that we'll be able to reach agreement. Thank you.
I have just a quick question. So you talk about the old technology, this will replace it, does that mean all those towers and big poles and structures go away and are replaced by the smaller technology? Or is it a combination?
Madam Chairman, members of the committee, in general terms, no, but the newer technology, the deployment in urbanized areas will be much more of what's called small cell technology. There will still be a use in industrial areas, urban, or rural areas and others for the other technology, but dense urban areas, you'll see this type of much less obtrusive Thank you.
Barb Meany, did you want to speak? Okay, thank you. Do you have questions for staff?
Very quickly, so going back to talking about existing facilities, existing rates, looking at the state legislation, how did our attorneys feel about continuing those existing rates? Because it seemed pretty clear in the legislation, we had to go to the new rates.
I would say that the existing legis, I mean, everything we've done, we've done in concert, working with our city attorney's office, but I would say the existing agreements we have in place, it doesn't say that that's exactly what will happen, it says that wireless companies may accept. So that's if they decide that they would like to accept. What we have kind of said is, and I would say that what we've done as well is something that City of Tucson already negotiated with Verizon back in the spring to pay for three additional years for anything that was approved prior to February 9th. So it's not like that we came out of this, out of the, out of thin air, this was things that we're already working on when we had some meetings with some of the other, the companies. So, you know, when we put it, we looked at, okay, there's these existing agreements, we can allow them to continue under that, because we have these as 10-year agreements in place for these existing facilities. Or we could, you know, have them terminate those and then work through the new process after that, or allow them a third alternative, which is to continue the existing rate structure until such time we'll adopt the new rate structure for those existing agreements.
So this is challenging for us as a city in the sense that what I had heard from staff was really protection of the neighborhoods and these, I don't even know what I want to, I don't know what they're called, cell towers being in neighborhoods, one right after another and right after another. And I understand that because aesthetically it may not be appealing to in our neighborhoods or on our poles. However, I look at this as very much modernizing our city, and I look at it as, as I've been dealing with the last couple of days, of a water heater. And the choices that I have in the sense of a water heater as to, do I keep the traditional water heater, or do I go to a tankless water heater, electrical, which is smaller and is more aesthetically, it's prettier, and it provides me more room. I kind of look at this argument, or debate, or dialogue, or discussion as the same way, in the sense of we are now putting cell towers on our what boxes. What I would like to see, and if it's possible, and this would be something for the industry to think about, if this is required and it's state law, how can we be creative enough to then provide possibly these, am I saying that right, the cell towers, or, okay, or the wireless, to aesthetically make it pretty and make it probably creative in an art way, an art form for our neighborhoods? And we are moving this way, and neighborhoods are going to want their phone moving at a higher speed. The other dynamic that I would recommend is that in this process, that we also bring in our government relations team to also be part of this, due to the fact that I find it very interesting that we're, once again, working very silo as each city is making their, writing their requirements or policy, that we are not collectively coming together and looking at every one of the cities, because it impacts every city, and how do we collectively write a policy that also meets to the needs of the, needs of the industry? And so I would like possibly or recommend that government relations comes in, and also the League of Cities comes in, to help us get there by February, by the February date. I'm assuming, and this is a great assumption, but, and I probably shouldn't assume, I should probably ask, that are you aware of other cities making policies and also the industry making concessions to some of their needs within the, within their city? Because I'm, I'm asking is, through their dialogue, there had to be certain concessions that met the needs of that city.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor, it's a couple of things that the wireless companies just had a comment about, about providing RF monitors for staff, or providing $3,000 a year for training for staff on safety, working around these kind of, this piece of equipment, were both that we saw when we were looking at City of Chandler's draft ordinance changes. So there are one, things that we weren't even thinking of initially, but we were like, okay, if this is something that the wireless company is okay with, and as I mentioned before, the city of Tucson, the three-year agreement they had in place for existing facilities. So we are looking at those, kind of some of those best practices that we want to keep, but at the same time, I'd also mention, as we noted before, the League of Cities came out and supported this legislation, a lot of the cities were in support of this legislation, we're the only ones opposed, we have a lot more experience in doing this. So I would say that in some ways, we have a lot, our concerns are a little more well-founded because of we've got a lot of these in place around the city, and so we know what we're dealing with, we have legitimate concerns going forward. So I don't have any problem, I think it'd be great to be working with the cities, and we are already, you know, talking with them and getting ideas of what's going on with, as they work together as well, some of those other cities. We can incorporate those as well.
Is there a standard for this equipment amongst the different companies?
No, I would, and I'll put an example, is when the state law was written, we had a certain cubic foot requirement for the antennas, they could be up to this size on top of the poles, and the equipment on the ground could be 28 cubic feet in size. We're not even, if you talk to the wireless companies now, they're not even talking about antenna that size or ground mounted equipment that size, and even if you talk to them, they're, they're saying about, they want to take that ground mounted equipment and they want to put it on the pole now. And in the side, I think, as I mentioned, that the technology is getting smaller, but the way that one company shields or conceals their antenna and the way that another company deals with their antenna is completely different, they have different pieces of equipment, unfortunately. And there's also requirements in the state legislation that requires this, that we can't require those companies to share equipment, or even to be, to co-locate on the same pole. So.
Can you permit it, though?
What's that?
If they agree to it, can you permit them to share a pole?
Yes, we can, but we cannot require them to do that.
Right.
So, go ahead. So am I hearing that there could be a possibly, there's five, I believe, five different companies, and could five different companies be on one pole?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that possibility, or, and an alternative, if you look at it, one single intersection with four traffic signal poles, you could see equipment on each one of those poles, and plus another light pole that's right next to it for all five, at the same intersection.
Okay. And I guess I'm going to go back to knowing this, and us being, say, the leaders and have more experience, why have we not been working with the league, even though they agreed to this, working with the league in our experience and saying, hey, there's these possibilities, how do we collectively as cities protect our neighborhoods and be able to come into compliance of the law and modernize our city? There's a possibility of this happening, how do we work with the industry to make sure that this does not happen?
That's a great question, Vice Mayor and Madam Chair. I would say that we, since December of 2016, we've been working with the League of Cities and with other cities on the draft legislation when it first came out, and noting a lot of these concerns. We had our attorneys, we had our technical experts working and providing comments on that. So those things have been voiced, and were voiced all the way through as different revisions were made to the House bill. And I would say some of them were incorporated, some were not, a majority of them were not. So our concerns about having a proliferation of these on different things, those were, some of them were heard and some were not.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, and just to add to that, I think it would be worthwhile at this point to take that step once more, reach out to the league, and just make sure that we are fully coordinating with other cities for that discussion to work with the industry as much as we can.
I believe Councilman Valenzuela joined us by phone, is that correct? Are you there?
I'm here, thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you have any comments or questions?
I don't, I've been briefed on this, and I understand that we probably need a little more time just to continue talking it through, but I understand that there's some legislation here that, that, you know, is driving the conversation as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Just quickly, on some of these provisions with regards to setbacks and locations, have you analyzed them to make sure we're not, we're not going to end up having none of these facilities? For example, you have under N, new or modified, monopoles opposed greater than 50 feet in height will only be permitted and right-of-way adjacent to industrial zone property, which is A1, A2, and greater than one-quarter mile from residentially zoned property. I hope we're not writing this where we may not have any of these facilities and then get in trouble with the state legislation. And I don't know, maybe we can ask Danell or Danielle, was it? What were some of the other concerns with provisions with regards to design standards? Was it because it was vague? Did you need more purpose? Better language? Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was a combination, thank you for the question and the opportunity to come up here and speak again. We, we had a number of concerns, so the spacing and setback requirements, I would say, really fall into two problem areas. Number one, by, it was unclear in the proposed ordinance whether some of those spacing requirements are only applied to new poles, as some would be permitted under the legislation, as opposed to all small wireless facilities. That needs to be clarified. Many of the spacing requirements or setbacks were requiring 50-feet distances between, we suggested that those be reduced down to a 10-feet distance between for many of those requirements. In addition to that, the screening requirements that are imposed for the facilities, there was a requirement for certain bushes and shrubbery and other screening to be included for ground equipment. Some of that, we believe, is going to be problematic with the electricity and utility companies, we don't believe that they will permit or agree to certain screening of their meters and other equipment, so that's problematic and concern. There's a shading requirement for any new poles that will have a single use, it says that there should be pedestrian shading installed along with those new poles, that is of concern. There's also a requirement that for any new poles that aren't, would have to be dual-purpose, that is not a requirement in the legislation, so that is above and beyond what the legislation requires. There is, as you mentioned, the limitation on where the over 50-foot poles can be installed. Those are subject to zoning review, but there is nowhere in the legislation that says they should only be permitted in the industrial areas. And so as you suggest, if we were to try to meet all of those spacing and setback and screening and other requirements, there is a strong possibility that we would not be able to bring the densification of 4G and the 5G small cells that we would need in order to allow for Internet of Things and smart cities and, you know, other kinds of smart solutions. We are, that is a big concern for all of us, both for the residents of the community and also for first responders. If we don't have the technology, then they can't use it.
It's a tough one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question for you.
Almost.
I wanted to know if any other cities have rejected or stopped regarding the equipment?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure.
The equipment and as it's required, has any other cities just stopped or rejected the whole?
Oh, you mean, have any other cities just said, no, we cannot install?
Right, right.
So the legislation does not allow for a moratorium, it requires all of the cities to process and review applications. As, as was mentioned earlier, the small wireless facilities on existing poles, which is generally the preference of everyone, just so you know, the preference is not to go install new poles all over, the preference is really to co-locate small wireless facilities, which are defined to be within a certain cubic volume, 28 cubic volume, cubic feet, as was mentioned. Those are permitted by right, and also new replacement or modified poles, utility poles, are permitted by right without zoning review and without zoning approval. And so the cities are prohibited at this point from a just-say-no policy.
And this is across the country? Does that?
So this is pursuant to the Arizona legislation.
So across the country, has any cities rejected or just said stopped regarding the equipment?
There, there have been cities across the country that have just said no, and unfortunately, the result for those cities is that they are not able to have the technology that we're talking about. We have not been able to build out either our 4G or prepare for 5G. The response to that, moratoriums, as they're called in many cities, is that state legislation has been adopted and enacted, because I think the legislatures are recognizing across the country that in order for us to be able to move forward with our technology, in order for us to be able to modernize, as you mentioned earlier, the cities need to have a little, some guidance, if you will, some kind of framework or roadmap for how this can be done so that the technology can be installed and made available anywhere and everywhere.
Got it.
And in response to your earlier question, if I might, about And in response to your earlier question, if I might, about other cities, we have been able to work collaboratively with many other cities. I was just on a call a couple of weeks ago with the City of Gilbert, addressing some of our concerns. And I can tell you, they, they were very willing to work with us, were very interested in being one of the first cities to have this technology. And I would say probably 90% of the concerns that we collectively voiced to the city were addressed in changes to their ordinance that we found beneficial, not only to the carriers, but also to the, to the city residents, first responders, and businesses alike. So we would absolutely encourage and look forward to working collaboratively with Phoenix and all the other cities in the, in the, within the state to address these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was interesting last night, I was watching the news about the large land purchase by Mr. Gates. Not ours, the real one. And how he planned to build an entire smart city. What I would like to see is Phoenix beating. I think we continue to tout how advanced we are and how progressive we are, and I think it is extremely important to all the residents. I remember when the first towers went up and we made them, paint them certain color and turn them into pine or palm trees or whatever so everybody could have cell phones. Well, this is just an illusion of that process. This is the future. And 5G is coming, probably sooner than we're going to be prepared. But I think it's very important that we work out the details on this. You know, get it in place. We can work with the industry to adjust as we go because it's going to be a learning experience, I think, for them. I think you're going to see the equipment getting smaller and smaller. It's how the way the world works nowadays. But I really encourage you to address their concerns, to get this up and running and get it in place. We might not like everything that we agree to, but put it in the thing, we can still be open to negotiation in the future if it doesn't work. But I know there isn't a kid on any block that doesn't want this technology.
I want it.
And most parents now have the phone that checks the kids when they walk in the house, see who's at the door while they're at work. And this is just an extension of that. So I encourage you to meet with them as soon as possible, to work out the details and get them back to us because I think it's very important we get this up and going. But thank you for your presentation today and what you've done so far. And I know it hasn't been easy and it's a challenge, but I know you guys can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Subcommittee members.
That brings us to Transit Homeless Outreach Team. Maria?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Maria Hyatt's here. Public Transit Directors provide a very brief overview of this item, requesting the Subcommittee's approval to move forward for an additional homeless outreach team dedicated to light rail in Phoenix. This was suggested by the Vice Mayor at a presentation on the Phoenix Carers Program at a recent park Subcommittee meeting. The proposed team would complement our efforts to address specific needs on the light rail line and around the stations and be part of the existing Phoenix Carers Program that was developed to address homelessness and the related issues associated with that. And so we're, we're working to bring this together along with our efforts. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maria.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. The, the opportunity here with the city's Phoenix Carers Program allowed us to piggyback onto the contract they have with Community Bridges, to bring on a team that would be focused on the light rail and the light rail area. So we saw this as an opportunity to address some of the community concerns that we hear in addition to the efforts that we were already putting towards making sure that light rail is a safe and secure place for everywhere and the perception of that. So as this Subcommittee knows, we have allocated additional police officers who are focused on light rail throughout the line in Phoenix. In fact, we just added additional four FTE police officers to do that. So what this program would really do is provide a two-member team. And in, unlike the Phoenix Carers Program that focuses on encampments, this is really looking at ways to address impacts of unsheltered, oh, I'm sorry. That would be helpful if I actually moved you through the slides at the same time as I talked. So at the same time, to address the impacts of unsheltered homeless to public transit. What Community Bridges has indicated that you can do with this is really, instead of it being a structured 40-hours, eight to five, they would work to identify what were the most, the best hours for them to work in order to address the issues that we see in the community and all around light rail. This would be very much a partnership. So this is not a one-story fits all and fixes everything, but it's more of a partnership between Police Department, both our Transit Enforcement Unit as well as the precincts, Valley Metro, the private security on Valley Metro, and our department also working in concert to address the issues and be their very visible presence and focus on the light rail. We can work with Transit Enforcement Unit as well as the precincts on any issues on the bus side that we would see. The cost for this program to bring on a two-person team is $125,000. And how we are funding this is through our annual allotment for security. What we've found is that with our private security that provides, provides security at our park and rides, that we can reallocate some of those resources. So specifically, we want to make sure that when our passengers are coming in in the morning and parking their car and getting on the bus, and then when they're coming home at night to get off of the bus and onto their, into their cars, that we have security presence at the park and rides. But we have that spot between the middle of the day that provided us an opportunity. So what we're proposing to do is instead provide roving security guards during those non-peak hours and also work with our camera system. This is more in alignment with what we used to do prior to this new contract. So it is, it is something that we feel very comfortable with as we move forward. Those savings can be used to fund the $125,000 for this security, or for the Phoenix Carers Homeless Outreach Team focused on light rail. We reviewed this with the Citizens Transportation Commission at their last meeting, and they did vote approval, they did recommend an approved vote on this. So today, we are asking for Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee to recommend to the City Council that the Public Transit Department fund a professional homeless outreach team focused on the light rail route in Phoenix.
Maria, how much is allocated to, I guess, there's, in the bond or in the, in the, in the light rail 2050, there's, there's a dollar amount allocated for security or public safety for the light rail?
Vice Mayor, we actually have two amounts. So when we were putting together the financial plan based on Transportation 2050, what we brought over what was, we were spending currently at that time. And so that is a significant amount of Transit Enforcement Unit that is brought, that is, you know, in coordination with the Police Department. What we also then did, though, with Transportation 2050, oh my gosh, I wish I remembered.
I guess, I guess I want to know the total amount that is allocated to Transit Enforcement.
And Vice Mayor, I will be happy to get you that number. Unfortunately, it's not in my head right this minute, and I'd hate to tell you the wrong number. So I will get back on that. In addition to that base amount, which provided 16 police officers, six sergeants, part of a commander, municipal security guards, and police assistants, we also knew that as our system grew with Transportation 2050, that we needed to be responsible and work in partnership with the Police Department in our community, recognizing we would need to do more as additional services came online. So we included an additional $2 million per year to go towards security. And those funds in the, this current year, this fiscal year that we're in, we used for the additional four police officers as well as the security guards. We also did bicycles for our Transit Enforcement Unit. That was one of the improvements, I think, that was suggested by Subcommittee as well as Citizens Transportation Commission. So each year, we have an additional two years to allocate towards specific needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional $2 million?
No, just a comment. I think that this is a, a big plus. I know I hear a lot from people about security on light rail, and so I think this is an excellent move to help address some of those issues.
Maria, you talked a little bit about this wasn't going to be an eight-to-five job. But then you talked about the morning and the evening at the park and rides. And I don't know, but I think perception is, is the homeless aren't hanging out there so much at noon as they are after dark. Are these people on call? How do you address that?
Chairwoman Williams, I confused you, and I apologize for that.
I was confused.
No, it was the way that I phrased it. So the savings that is going to fund the Phoenix Carers Homeless Outreach Team is coming from our security guard savings. And those security guards are focused on our bus park and rides. So this will be separate with the Community Bridges Program. And that team will be, we will be working with Human Services, Police Department on what is the best, and Valley Metro on what is the best time for them to be working. So I, I connected the two, and that's where I confused, and I apologize for that.
So they are on call?
The answer is, they will be, they will be identifying the appropriate times to work their 40-hour shift during the week. I do not have those hours today. As soon as we get them involved, I think they're going to do a scan, talk with our Transit Enforcement Unit and Phoenix Police Precincts, probably be talking to the council members whose districts are all in this area to really get an idea of what are the appropriate times, and then we can work with them to develop that time from there.
Do the train drivers ever make comment on what they see? I mean, at every station, every few minutes. So I would think that would be a good information source.
They do have an opportunity, you know, as they run in, and they communicate through the Valley Metro Rail Operations and Control Room. They do have that voice connect so that they can let them know what they see. The Operations and Control Room then works with the private security guards to be able to address issues that they see.
Recently, at a meeting, I was asking about the train drivers. And they said, because they're located, they don't always know what's going on at the back. And they really encouraged people to speak up. Somebody who's a rider in the back and sees something that's not right should call it to their attention because then they can call it in and have police jump on at the next station. So I would encourage anybody who's listening to tell everybody, if you see something that doesn't look right or doesn't smell right, let the driver know.
Madam Chair, you're absolutely right. We, we call it, if you see it, say it. Make sure that you are reporting anything that you see. And that's one of the things that we do see, is that our community is very, more willing today, I think, than in previous years to make sure that they're making those phone calls to Crime Stop, to Valley Metro, to any number of resources in order to address the concerns that they might have.
Councilman Valenzuela, are you still on the phone?
He dropped off.
He just dropped off. Okay, I just want to make sure he didn't have a question.
I have one more question. When, I envisioned the Transit Outreach Team. And, and it was because I was watching the light rail on Seventh Avenue in Camelback, between Seventh Avenue and 19th Avenue in Camelback, and watching at different hours of the time, different scenarios. And what I envision with the outreach team is that the outreach team would be active on the light rail along with the Transit Authority or Transit Enforcement, and that they are active on the light rail, jumping off at different segments of the light rail and kind of just moving through with Transit Security or Authority to then see what is happening on the line, within our lines. My question about the 40 hours, light rail runs from Monday to Sunday. So how are those 40 hours going to be met with only two people? And I guess what I'm saying is I'm advocating for more than two people because our line is larger than two people to manage. In particular, I just think from Councilwoman Gallego's point on 24th Street all the way up, to go all the way up to Councilwoman Stark's area, that that's a lot of line for two people to be able to manage and to be able to be jumping off and moving to the next one. And so I'm, I guess, I'm glad that this is at this point, but I don't think we have enough outreach teams on there unless they're working with the outreach teams on the ground also on the line. So I think we, we need to still work on this piece to make sure it happens in the way that we want it to coordinate with everybody on the ground that is working. Thank you.
Since the recommendation is for us to move this to City Council to fund, how about we do that, but do it on a pilot project to see if one team is sufficient?
That's good. Yeah.
You're moving that?
Sure.
Okay. Are you seconding that?
I'm seconding it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, he's back. I'm sorry. Did you want to make any comments, Councilman?
No, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I had a bad connection, but I'm glad I was able to get back on.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Next is our 2018 State Legislative Agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Frank McCune, our Government Relations Director, is here along with John Wayne Gonzalez and Clark Prinsell to present on the state, on the state and federal legislative agenda items.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Councilmember Stark and Councilmember Valenzuela on the phone. I'm Frank McCune, Director of Government Affairs. And with me today, we have Clark Prinsell, our Manager of Federal Affairs, and John Wayne Gonzalez, our Manager of State Affairs. And we're presenting specifics to this committee, the portion of our state and federal agendas for review, and then asking for a recommendation to go to policy today in Policy Committee. So with that, just to put it in perspective a bit, the federal agenda is one that is more ongoing. It's more of a, of an offensive position where we're constantly working on grants, long-term legislation, long-term projects. And the state agenda, more often than not, is working on items that come to us or impact us at the legislature. So you'll see the nature of the two are a little different in the, in the bigger presentations. So with that, we will start with Clark, and he will work with us. Are we starting with you?
With John.
We'll start with John Wayne on the state agenda. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Subcommittee members, these are the guiding principles that we have been using for the last several years. As a reminder, for the state agenda, we definitely want to oppose unfunded mandates. We definitely want to preserve local control, protect revenue sharing, which is voter-approved money, tax dollars that come to the city to help pay for our general fund. Matter of fact, about a third of our general fund is shared revenue. And then, most important, protecting our water resources as issues continue with drought issues on Lake Mead and the Colorado River, making sure that we are well-positioned and ready to react to anything that may impact the city of Phoenix in a negative way. And I will go quickly through these, but from the Streets Department, we received a list of items to update Title 34. Title 34 is a section of law that deals with how public entities can construct horizontal and vertical projects. And just to go through some of these, we're just trying to, the staff is recommending that we try to adjust the fee limit changes for that we try to adjust the fee limit changes for the ability to select architects and engineers off a list based on state law. Right now, those numbers are different, and so we're trying to bring them in alignment. And then, of course, with design-build, that's a method of delivery in a project, and we're trying to look at different ways of who can lead it. Right now, state law says that it has to be the contractor that has to lead a design-build team, but staff believes that sometimes it's, maybe it's the architect firm, or maybe it's city staff, or maybe it's the principal that should lead the team to complete a project. And then another thing that staff found is that there are some violations. There's a section of law, a section in Title 34, that there are penalties involved with violating these sections, and we found that they actually expired several years ago, and we'd like to reinstate those penalties. If you're going to have a law, you might as well have some penalties to make sure everyone's playing fairly by the same rules. And then again, there are some deadlines that are coming up in state law. There are some deadlines that bring some of these alternative project delivery methods to an end. We have actually one that is going to sunset if we don't change the law next year. That could impact some of our federal construction projects that have federal dollars for construction, and also just the general concept of being able to use the construction manager at risk. There's a deadline, I believe, in 2020 if we don't. So start working on trying to extend those project delivery methods because they're coming due for a sunset, and so we're trying to be proactive. And with that, if there are no questions, hand it over to Clark. Prinsell.
So on the federal agenda, we'll have the same two guiding principles as we have in previous years. The first will be to promote fiscal sustainability, and the second will be to protect local authority. So on behalf of the Public Transit Department, we will be advocating for federal funding for the high-capacity transit system within the city, and especially pushing for the South Central Rail Extension and then the Northwest Phase Two to be included in the President's budget this year, as well as both appropriation bills for 2019 fiscal year. Additionally, we will be pushing for the reinstatement of the alternative fuel tax credit. This is a tax credit that expired at the end of 2016 and was a tax credit that the city used to the amount of 3.2 million per year. So we'll not only push for its reinstatement, but also want it to be reinstated retroactively to January 1 of this year. And then, for the last, for the public transit is the Highway Trust Fund solvency. This is a fund at the federal level that solvency is in question. We will be pushing to support legislation that would increase the solvency of the fund and make sure in the long term that it has the funds it needs to continue funding projects at the state level. And then, on behalf of the Streets Department, we will be focusing on the federal funding model and looking for different revenue streams at the federal level that can be used to support projects within the department. We will also be examining the tax reform package and ensuring that there are no negative consequences to that plan, specifically bonding issues and allowing the city to be able to use municipal bonds as we use today and have no restrictions placed, or no additional restrictions placed upon them. The Buy America statutes, we are looking to streamline this program. FTA and FHWA have sometimes different rules when it comes to Buy America projects, and especially those projects we're working on that are multimodal. It would be much easier if these rules were streamlined and they reflected the same in both programs. And then also local funding priorities. With the discussion of an infrastructure program at the federal level, we, the Streets Department has a list of projects that they have, that are available, that we'd like to see funded in that program, however it looks when it's implemented. Additionally, freight transportation, so working with MAG on identifying those avenues that freight transportation is using, and then pushing for federal funds to be used to improve the transportation of freight within the region, especially first mile and last mile. And then the congestion mitigation, air quality.
Does that include Lynn and Galasport and getting them to upgrade it so that traffic can get through there quicker and that security is in place?
Chairwoman, much of the work on the freight transportation currently within MAG is within the region itself. I do know that that is something we've also worked on additionally, and I can make sure it's a focus within it. This topic is more of the regional focus, but MAG does work on the Sun Corridor and to that point.
I just think it's more important as the new 11 happens, and if we really want to increase trade opportunities, got to get the trucks through. I would appreciate if you'd add that to the list.
Yes, ma'am. We will. Thank you, Chairwoman. And then on the CMAQ topic, that is to allow flexibility within that funding so that those funds that are used to mitigate air quality are used in non-attainment areas or the areas where they can most be effective. And then there's the flood mitigation and stormwater infrastructure. As we all know, we have a billion-dollar-plus backlog of projects within the city, and as the Government Relations Team, we're working to try to, every avenue for federal funding to make those projects move forward.
Yes, with regards to flood mitigation, I know Senator McCain's looking at trying to do some things along the Rio Salado. So are we going to look for monies to maybe assist him as well? I mean, a lot of it will deal with the plug control.
Yeah, we're looking for monies along that whole region. So not only Rio Salado, but Rio Salado Oeste, and then also finishing up any work around Trace Rios and then on, within the river itself, but also on the banks as well.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that's a great economic boost for us if we can get something going along the Rio Salado.
And hopefully, he looks for money to assist us.
He said he would.
Chairwoman, Councilmember, yes. And then, behalf on the Water Department, we will be working on federal funds that are used for forest restoration throughout the entire city, or throughout the entire state, funding for Watersmart, which are federal funds that we use on reliance and infrastructure projects within the city. And then a reservoir pilot, this would be a pilot project that would take place at Roosevelt Dam that would allow us to use some of that extra space that they have for flood control since the improvements that were done at the dam that could be used for conservation of water. And then also system conservation in general and making sure we're saving as much water as possible at Lake Mead.
That's the quick presentation today for your approval to move forward to policy today.
Councilman Valenzuela. I can't even say it. Danny, are you still there?
I'm still here. I'm good, thank you.
Do you have any questions or comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Future items? Oh, we don't have any public. Future agenda items? Anything special everybody wants to add? Okay, in that case, we are adjourned.
Woo-hoo. Good efficient meeting.